Meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. Meeting is open to the public today. We have received one petition, thirteen questions from nine different questioners from members of the public. Can I also take this opportunity to request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode, please, so they don't disturb the conduct of this meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. I'm now going to ask each of the Transport Regeneration Committee members to introduce themselves. I'm councillor Mazerikbal. I represent the Darnall Ward and I co-chair this meeting with my colleague Julie Growcott. So we'll be taking it in terms to chair this meeting. So if I ask councillor Julie Growcott to introduce herself.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm councillor Julie Growcott, member for Stockbridge and of Darnall Ward.
Councillor Ian Open, a member for Graves Park Ward. I thought you were going to call out names, Chair, so not really asleep.
I'm councillor Ruth Mercer, a member for City Ward.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst. I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Councillor Andrew Sanger, councillor for Forward Ward.
Hello, I'm Christine Gilligan. I'm councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm also deputy chair for this group.
Hello, my name's Craig Gumbelpew. I'm councillor for East Echolsfield Ward.
Hello, I'm councillor Richard Shaw and I represent Beetham Greenham Ward.
Thank you for that. Have we had any apologies?
None received, Chair.
Any items for exclusion of public and press?
None, Chair.
And do any members wish to declare any interest in any of the items of business on the agenda?
Chair, in the Budget Monitoring Report, it makes reference to Electric Works. My employer is a tenant of Electric Works, so I'd like to declare that as a personal interest.
Thank you for that, councillor Shaw. Councillor Sanger?
Thanks, Chair. Item 11, the 20-mile power speed limit scheme in Crosspool slightly covers Forward Ward, so just a personal interest as a ward councillor.
Thank you for that, councillor Sanger. Anybody else? So the woodseats proposal for 20 mile air does cover Graves Park Ward and I have in the normal course of business a council representation on that. Thank you, councillor Auckland. Anybody else? I don't know if councillor Minnashu's sat in the back, he's also the new councillor for Crooks. He's just here as an observer, so thank you for coming along today. Next item is public questions and petitions. As I said earlier, we've got one petition and thirteen questions. We've got half an hour time allocated to the questions and petitions. So if the questionnaires could be succinct and the people that provide a response as well, we've got a really heavy agenda we need to get through to business. So the first person I've gotten here, the lead petitioner, says Ibrah Poussey.
Chair, Ibrah has sent his apologies, but he would like to submit the petition to the committee.
We'll note that then. Yeah, thank you for that. The next one, I've got a question from Geoff Cox. Hi, Geoff, if you want to come to the microphone. Thank you.
Are we on? Yep. Thank you. Thank you for taking the question today. I'll be very brief. I'm representing the South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. I'm sure I don't have to remind members of this committee that the ARIR report identified that about 30% of the city's emissions come from housing. This question today is around decarbonisation of the privately owned housing stock and we'll have future questions or petitions for you about social housing to follow. I think it's widely recognised now that many people, owner occupiers, are prepared to invest in insulating their homes, reducing their carbon emissions, reducing their energy bills, but lack the confidence to know how to invest that money. You know, they're wary of going with the next salesman who comes by, you know, is there a government grant available? Is this to spec? All those kind of questions. Polls always show that householders are most confident in getting impartial advice if it comes from a council rather than anybody with a commercial interest. And that's a great credit to our local authorities in this country that that view is held. So what this question is asking is whether the council will set up an impartial advice centre for homeowners who want to get precisely that advice. This is badly needed as the South Yorkshire Energy Centre at Healy City Farm closed within the last couple of weeks. A relatively small investment by this council, perhaps with other partners involved as well, can release all that private capital in individuals' bank accounts. It will stimulate the market and it will reduce the city's carbon emissions. So for a relatively small investment, we can have a huge multiplier effect with both regeneration benefits as well as climate change benefits. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I understand we're meeting up with yourself and your colleague, myself, Julie, and councillor Gillian as well, I think, next week. So we'll have a further conversation then. But to answer your question, and just for members of the public, the questions and the responses do go on our website. So I don't want you to be busy scribbling, so this information will go on our website and hopefully you'll also receive a written copy. Earlier this year, the Climate Change Economy and Development Transitional Committee undertook a short review of domestic retrofit in Sheffield. The review acknowledged the agency of acting on climate change and the need to push forward at our earliest opportunity to introduce and support domestic retrofit in Sheffield. A report is being drafted on the back of these sessions and will be shared with the committee and relevant officers to consider how we move forward, including how we support homeowners to decarbonise their properties. The council will further explore how it supports and delivers retrofit programmes as part of the development of housing decarbonisation roadmap for the city and will include engagements with the residents, communities and other organisations across the city to support delivery. As I said, we're also going to have a conversation next week and as this is a new committee, it's important that we also get members of the public involved, as you suggested here. So we'll be running workshop sessions with members, officers, and we'll be inviting stakeholders like yourselves and members of the residents. So hopefully that answers your question and see you next week. Thank you. The next question is from David Cobley. You've got two questions, I understand.
Yep, I have. The first question is about the proposed Park Hill parking scheme. In month one of this financial year, Sheffield City Council have an overspend of approximately £19 million, of which the Transport, Regeneration and Climate budgets have contributed £1.7 million. And further against this, street scene and regulation, which includes parking, has contributed an overspend of £1.1 million for month one. In answer to a freedom of information request, Highways officers have advised that this scheme will cost £650,000 to set up, will incur annual running costs of £241,000 and will achieve an income of only £57,000 annually. This amounts in round terms to costing over four times more to run against income perceived. Leaving aside that the TRO consultation has provoked considerable opposition, i.e. it is a fact that even by 23rd of March, 1,077 responses had been received, of which 895 were objections, that well in excess of 2,000 individuals have signed a petition asking for the scheme to be abandoned, then in order this committee can provide maximum budget savings to offset the aforementioned overspend, which in itself could lead to commissioners being appointed by central government, then my first question is whether or not the scheme is already accounted for in the financial budget for the current financial year. Secondly, if so, then would it not make financial common sense to abandon the current scheme in its entirety forthwith, vis the current savings now being required by your director of finance? Thirdly, if not, will the council be able to justify a future scheme which runs at a considerable year-on-year loss in any event? My final question on this involves a local councillor who stated in writing on the Norfolk Park Facebook on the 17th of October 2019 that, quote, 'Residents will have an opportunity to design a scheme', close quotes, open quotes, 'it won't be a council one imposed on them', finally, 'it won't be huge or it'll be too unwieldy'. None of this has happened, except the scheme covers some 67 roads across two wards and is indeed unwieldy. Councillors Fox and Miskell have also stated at the last Lac East meeting and in a separate email that if the majority of residents are not in favour of the scheme, it will not be imposed by the council. Could you please confirm the number of responses to the Citizenspace survey and also the number responding to the council by separate email and letter? In each case, please confirm the number of responses which objected to that scheme.
Thank you. Shall I provide a response to that and then you come in with your second question?
The second question, sorry, the second question is not about the same scheme, it's about...
Yeah, that's why I've suggested...
Do you want me to read the second one out as well?
Yes, if you would please.
Right, okay. Sorry, I hope I've not sent anybody to sleep, but yeah, the second question. For over 30 years, the residents of Donnington Road and Norfolk Park Avenue have continued to campaign for some form of traffic calming stroke speed restrictions, given the fatal accident which occurred and took the life of young Georgina Stubbs. Subsequent to that accident, no right and left turn restrictions were imposed at the junction of Essex Road, Holdings Road, Donnington Road with St Aidan's Road. Unfortunately, these restrictions are largely ignored by those using the roads, in particular Donnington Road, and that in respect is locals or commuters. It is a rat run. South Yorkshire Police cannot or will not reply to a freedom of information request asking the numbers of penalty notices issued to literally hundreds of drivers ignoring the restrictions. The guess amongst locals is that these breaches are not being policed and the situation is worsening daily with no notices actually being issued. For the last three years or so, councillor Richards has been leading attempts to install some form of traffic calming, but without success and consultations, we were told, would occur on the 3rd and then 10th of March have not happened. However, in the last few days, she has informed us that, open quotes, 'I have been assured that the Donnington Road plans have been drafted. I've seen an early draft.' As you know, traffic calming is being undertaken, sorry, no traffic calming is being undertaken by the council due to costs, but we have indicated that we would use our CIL money to implement a scheme. And further, she said that the CIL money is already there to use now. Assuming this is correct, it is disconcerting not to see any mention of such plans, et cetera, in the work programme. Could you please confirm that a draft scheme for traffic calming measures, et cetera, for the roads in question is in draft form and that the finance is available via CIL and when the consultation will occur? Thank you.
No, no, please, obviously, thank you for your questions and I'll respond. On your first question, in our agenda today regarding the budget, we do have, it's item eight, Budget Monitoring Report, month one. So regarding our budget, each month we always provide an update on where we are with the budget. And as I said, it's an item on the agenda today as well. So the current schemes are proposed in line with the 2018 Parking Strategy, which sets out the ways in which we will manage parking in order to achieve our wider aims in transport and land use in planning. The Scheme Consultation has provided residents and local businesses the opportunity to comment on the proposals and this will be reported in full along with the survey data to this committee meeting in September 2022 to decide whether a scheme in some form should proceed to implementation. The cost and income figures that have been quoted and estimated figures are based on the scheme size at that time. The scheme is still in early stages of development and assumptions have been made at this point. As the scheme moves to the design stage and the number of bays are established, the figures for the installation, administration and income related to the scheme will be more precise. The £57,000 annual income is an estimate based on the potential number of permits expected to be issued. At this stage, it does not include the potential revenue from pain display bays or penalty charge notices. We will be reviewing the potential scale of this income as part of the scheme, but our initial estimates indicate that it is expected that this would cover the annual running costs and partially offset the initial implementation costs. The full financial implications will be reported to the committee as part of the decision-making process. Results of the consultation, Citizenspace, we received 1,088 responses, 879 were objections, 37 in support of the remainder, sorry, 37 in support and the remainder did not give a response to any of the questions. They didn't object or support. Emails, there have been 260 emails into our inboxes, 128 of these were objections, seven were in support, the remainder were asking questions about the scheme or requesting paper copies of the plans. Letters we have received, we've received 15 letters, 13 were objecting to the scheme and two were supporting the scheme. So hopefully I've answered the questions that you put to me. Regarding both councillor Fox and councillor Miskell, they'll have said something very similar to what I'm about to say. It's important that we hear, we listen to residents regardless of the comments, so if they're good, bad, it's important that we have that feedback. And as I've said in my response, this committee will be taking the decision. But also for me, what I am picking up is that sometimes it's hit and miss when we're trying to put information through letterboxes. So the commitment we want to give to yourselves, if this decision is taking place in September, we'd like to work with your local councillors and the residents to say this is the decision that will be coming in September. So you'll be fully informed and involved in that final decision. Regarding the second question, you're right, councillor Shonid has requested the option for traffic calming on Donnington Road, but developed by our engineers. As we are currently looking to prioritise investment in accident saving schemes based on citywide accident data, this site is not included in this year's programme. The developed options have been sent to your ward councillors and they will decide if they can use the community infrastructure levy to fund the scheme, that's the cell that you referred to. However, following a recent change to legislation, the council do now have the opportunity to choose to apply for enforcement powers to use camera enforcement for moving traffic offences, such as people driving through band turns the wrong way on one-way streets, et cetera. Regarding the freedom of information requests, I suggest you write to the police crime commissioner. It's not something that we can respond to and hopefully they will provide a response. Hopefully I've answered your question, sir. As I said, you'll also get a written response. The next person is Steve Bergen. Can I firstly apologise to you, sir, for not dropping you an email straight after full council last week? I've had my ear bent by your local councillor, Richard, so I've got to take a some cake. So I do apologise sincerely for not getting the information to you on time.
Well, if you get some emails, you'll see I've bent your ear again last night, so thank you for that. David has stolen quite a bit of my thunder. My question is again based on the Park Hill Norfolk Park permit scheme and some of the points are based on information given to me by a council officer. So your responses just then about how many people were in favour and against the scheme actually don't tell me anything other than the senior transport officer told me. But my question is, given that the council is headed for an £18 million to potentially £60 million plus shortfall in 2022/23, given that 90-plus percent of respondents in the consultation were not in favour of the scheme, given that initial council calculations show a loss of £184,000 per year ongoing on running costs versus income, and given that the proposed scheme would cost 4.22 times more than it to run than it would bring in, and in line with councillor Fox's statement at the last LAC meeting, which was witnessed by a number of members of this group, currently unminuted but is to be corrected at the next LAC meeting on the 30th of June, that if the local community didn't want the scheme, it would be shelved? Given all those, can this committee, because this committee is responsible for deciding whether to go forward or not, can this committee now formally close down the proposed scheme and if necessary, work with local residents who are affected to realise a solution? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. I have, as you recognised, responded earlier, I've responded to the points that you've raised. Regarding councillor Fox, as I've said, like me, if I was in my ward, I'd be making it very clear, it's important that we hear from residents, as I said, good or bad, and based on what we get back, that's how a decision is taken. And as I said earlier, this decision will be coming to this committee and it's important for us to work with you as residents to ensure we find a solution that works for your community. That's the commitment that I can give you today. The next question on something similar is Sandra France, if you'd like to come to the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, my question is about the Park Hill parking scheme as well. This is more about the communication and administration of the scheme. It's been really poor. Residents have asked many times for a meeting or workshop with councillors and the Transport Department to answer questions and we've had no response. This was also promised at the full council meeting. Some houses affected have not even received letters about the scheme until we've been round with the petition or we spoke to them and they know nothing about it. So how are they expected to comment on this? Either agree or object? The whole administration and communication has been appalling with conflicting or no information, such as different parking times and days that were online and different to the letters that were sent to us. No responses to emails or queries we've sent to councillors or the Transport Department. Our council are always promising to find out and get back to us, but never does. It's upset so many people, worried their road is going to look like a car park and having to find extra money. I would hope that Sheffield council has learnt lessons from the tree saga, which was and continues to be an embarrassment to Sheffield. It has been noted many times that people's experience of engaging with the council is not positive and difficulties getting responses to concerns and issues. Please listen to the concerns of our neighbours, your constituents and engage with us. Councillors keep saying they want to work together to deliver a better future for Sheffield and listen to their constituents more, so do this. And something I want to add, you've just said that in September, we will be involved in the final decision and the outcome, so I hope that will take place. And also the traffic calming on our road, that we'll be involved with that and we won't, before they make a decision or send us letters about what they're going to propose to do, they need to speak to us first. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. The size of the Park Hill scheme meant that it was decided to send out a postcard with important information, such as scheme operation times, permit, prices, et cetera, and have the plans available online in two designated public spaces. We also offered to send out copies of plans showing the restrictions outside individual resident houses, should people not be able to access the plans any other way. Many residents took us up on this offer. We have sent out one leaflet and a follow-up letter extending the consultation deadline. We were aware of an error on the Citizenspace survey where the incorrect scheme operation times were displayed, but this was corrected within 24 hours. The postcards were delivered by Royal Mail. We were informed of some addresses that had not received a postcard and then we followed this up and sent out additional postcards as soon as we were made aware. We extended the consultation end date to ensure that these people had enough time to submit a response to the scheme. There were also A3 street notices planned on every street about the scheme and how to find out more information. 33% of residents and businesses have been touched through our consultation, which is a high response rate. It is disappointing that you feel that the administration and communication has been appalling. All emails that have come into the parking scheme inbox in relation to the scheme have been acknowledged and any specific queries have been answered. Specifically relating to the point you raised, Miss France, the client officer for the scheme has had several, I understand they've had several email exchanges with yourself. They've also visited you at home to hand-deliver plans and spare leaflets as requested. We don't get it right all of the time and I apologise for that on behalf of the council. When I was speaking to the officers and my colleague, I usually get two or three pieces of junk mail through the letterbox like most people do these days and sometimes we miss, you know, if there's something important in there. So we need to up our game to ensure that the information, I don't know if we've put something on the envelope to say this is really important, please read, but we do our level best to try and communicate. That's why I've put in something physically through your door, having something on the website and then on Lampo. So we try and do our level best, but I do apologise to those residents that didn't get the information that we put out. But as I understand, the officers did pick up concerns from yourself and others and went back and posted the information through. And as I've said to the other two people that have asked questions, we will be coming back to you and working with you to ensure that we put a scheme that works for you all. I've got, the next person is Mr Slack.
Good afternoon all and welcome to your new roles. Two questions on regeneration today. Question one, on 6th of May 2022, LRC UK Limited, as the owners of Chapel Walk House, were served an improvement notice for the apartment's common parts, based on the council's belief that a category one hazard exists at the premises and remedial action is required. A category one hazard is defined as having a serious and immediate risk to a person's health and safety under the Housing Health under the housing health and safety rating system. It also indicates that the remedial work must begin by the twenty-eighth of June, twenty-twenty-two. My questions are, what exactly is the hazard this notice covers? Has any response been received from LRC UK Limited about the issue? And will they commence the remedial works within the timescale? Why has it taken so long for the hazard to come to light when the development was approved in May, twenty-seventeen, and has already included a six-month halt in work from November, twenty-seventeen due to asbestos contamination? The apartments finally opened in March, twenty-twenty-one. How many people have been exposed to this category-one hazard since then? Either within the apartments, the retail premises, or the street? And what more can Sheffield City Council say about the process from here and whether there are ongoing hazards to tenants of the apartments or anybody else? And question two, a little bit more positive. Congratulations to Sheffield City Council on retaining the important role of heritage champion within the city's new committee structure. This was not a foregone conclusion during the transition process, but following input from the public engagement process, I'm pleased to see the retention of the champion role. Congratulations to councillor Ridler. I hope she sees the value of the role in protecting and promoting the role of heritage spaces in Sheffield's economy, estimated at two hundred and forty million pounds a year. It will be challenging in the face of the city's budget problems, but a gentle reminder that once heritage is sold or demolished, it is lost forever. How will the role of the heritage champion fit into the work of this committee? Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, Mr Slack. On your first question, wrong committee, I'm afraid. That responsibility doesn't fall within this committee, it falls within the Housing Committee. But I understand a notice has been served and we'll get you a written response from the Housing Committee, which I think councillor Douglas chairs. Regarding the second question, the committee both notes and welcomes the continuation of the role of heritage champion, which is important for a city such as Sheffield, given its rich and varied heritage offers. We wish councillor Ridler every success and also extend our thanks to councillor Mike Drabble for the time and commitment he has dedicated to the role in the past. He's just been amazing. I've thanked him plenty of times for the work he's done. The heritage champion will be able to influence positively the various work streams this committee will lead on. And I'm sure this will include working closely with officers and partners on key city projects. In fulfilling this role, the heritage champion, we will be able to provide feedback to this and other committees. So it's not just the role for this committee, but all committees moving forward, ensuring heritage is represented in the positive light that it should be. The next question is from David Bamford. We'll provide David with a written response. The next question is from Bridget Ingle. Hiya. Do you go to a mic and then everybody can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that I think Sheffield City Council is doing a fantastic job with the regeneration of Sheffield City Centre. And on the back of that, I would like to ask why Sheffield City Council's not taking a more proactive approach to removing graffiti tagging from Sheffield City Centre. It's ignored even in around the key regeneration areas of heart of the city. While I appreciate that Leeds and Sheffield are different cities, there's not one piece of graffiti tagging in their city centre. Sheffield and Leeds both have the same graffiti removal policies, I checked, and presumably similar financial constraints. So why is it possible in Leeds and not in Sheffield? And the reason I think it's important is because I think it has a major impact on the Sheffield street scene and I think it's why Sheffield gets a lot of flak in terms of being called dirty and untidy.
Thank you. Thank you for your question and the positive comments on the city centre. We're going through a transition. An uplift survey was commissioned by the Highways Maintenance Division and City Centre Management Team. And this will involve a page on a number of high-profile privately-owned areas to provide a general uplift to the core retail and hospitality areas of the city centre to make these areas more appealing for the coming months. This will include use of a cherry picker to remove prominent graffiti from high levels, such as above shop canopies on the moor, to provide a more welcoming street scene aesthetic. It is envisaged this push on privately-owned buildings will be required. It will be repeated and sustained over the coming months and will include city gateways as well. The City Centre Management Team is liaising with businesses to enable them to manage their own graffiti moving forward. The council's Highway Maintenance Division has reached out to all major utility cabinet companies, which include BT Open Reach and Virgin Media. And we've asked them for a push from their side in repainting their infrastructure in the city centre. Funding has been identified by businesses in the target areas and have been written to be informed that this cleaning will commence from the thirteenth of June onwards, in time for the university's open days, and we've also had the women's Euros here as well. A new group has been created to look at a long-term partnership solution that includes partners from South Yorkshire Police, the Sheffield Business Improvement District and other external bodies such as the universities. Hope that answers your point. The next question I've got is from Claire Mappin. I understand, you're welcome. Claire Mappin, I don't think she's not able to attend. We've also had a question from Emily Griffiths, three questions in total, but I understand she isn't able to attend. And I think the final person that I was going to allow to speak was Nasser from the GMB Union, if you'd like to come across.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak. My name's Nasser Ruff, for those of you who don't know. I'm the new GMB S seventy-five branch secretary. And my responsibility is to represent taxi drivers that are our members across Sheffield and South Yorkshire and Humber Side. And the below questions and comments I have got in regards to the Clean Air Zone and the support for taxi drivers. Members and fellow comrades of mine within the taxi trade are going through what can only be described as a tsunami of debt, having come out of a Covid nineteen pandemic, which has destroyed the families, added on further burdens on bills, the cost of living, which has shot up quite ridiculously, the sixty-eight percent increase in fuel prices as well at the pumps, which drivers are paying for on a daily basis. Pre-lockdown then, before we did this, the decimation of the taxi trade, the cost of vehicles was nowhere near the market value is for used vehicles and new vehicles now. We're looking fifteen to twenty thousand pounds for a part-used vehicle and for brand-new vehicles that are off CAS compliance are over twenty thousand pounds, brand-new, twenty-five thousand pounds a year, your kind of minimum starting price. Now, having to pay that as a taxi driver, that is coming out of a Covid nineteen pandemic and having support from the government given to us to pay our bills is quite ridiculous, to be fair, to make that kind of requirement from a working-class taxi driver of this town when work isn't what it used to be. So where we stand at this moment in time with regards to vehicle servicing, the testing structure and everything, all this is an expense on taxi drivers. So what we're here today to urge Sheffield City Council is to reconsider some of the financial support it is given or alternatively, the position where GMB stands at this moment in time is to follow the example of Greater Manchester, who have just announced to ITV Calendar News, you can check this one out, and it's Andy Burnham, and he said, just put the investment into incentives, clean up the air without threatening jobs, and consult the actual trade. The actual trade is telling us now, the environment has now changed out there. Let's face reality, lockdown and street closures, more cycling lanes in Sheffield now have helped reduce the emissions in the polluting areas. The impact review has already said to Sheffield City Council that most companies are letting their employees work from home. So the people travelling through the town centres and the polluting areas that were polluting areas that were on red are now coming into amber and green. So we would ask a new survey be done, a new assessment be done, and for now, a pause be put on Clean Air Zones with regards to the impact on taxi drivers until you can make a better assessment of the situation out there. Because at this moment in time, the financials for taxi drivers is so hard that we're, just as a union, just to give you some sort of realistic impact on the ground, reality is that we are spending till twelve, one o'clock in the morning sometimes doing applications for hardship, payments from authorities, getting them onto council tax benefits, doing universal credit applications for taxi drivers, and we are spending best part of our evenings away from our families as representatives to help taxi driver community out there that is absolutely on its knees at this moment in time. And coming out of a Covid nineteen pandemic, we would urge the council strongly to follow suit on the basis of affordability, like Andy Burnham has done with Greater Manchester, and tell the government to dig deep in its pockets with regards to support. And while that happens, please give taxi drivers some assurances, you're there fighting in their corner, and put this on hold for at least two to three years when we can make that assessment as well. I won't bore you with all the statistics of fuel increases and various other things. I think you know that as working-class people yourself as well, you'll know what the realities are out there. And I would strongly urge you guys to please stand with the community that's been, for the last two years, been taking on NHS care workers free of charge, you know, supporting the pandemic from the taxi drivers and the taxi trade across Sheffield and all of them has been phenomenal. And it's about time people like yourselves in these positions stand up for them and kind of say no to the government imposing this ridiculous criteria on taxi drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Nasser, on behalf of the GMB. Because just for the members of the public that are here today and that are listening in, we've set a deadline of Friday before the Tuesday meeting where we ask members of the public to put in the written questions. So it gives us an opportunity to get a written response. Unfortunately, Nasser fell short of that deadline. I think we got the questions yesterday morning, so we're not able to provide a detailed response. But I thought it was important for Nasser to come and speak on behalf of his drivers. Cost of living, the government is not just letting taxi drivers down, but it's letting residents, businesses, it's letting us all down, and it definitely can do more. Regarding the Clean Air Zone, this authority has signed up to the Clean Air Zone. It went through a formal decision when we had the cabinet structure last year. But as you've said, the economic times are very, very different to what they were then. The commitment I can give you today is that this committee, because we meet in September, and I know the minister who's responsible for this at government level is due to sign this off in the next seven to ten days, I've been informed. I hear where you're coming from, I think the financial support is key. We have seen second-hand cars, their cost has just escalated, so it is becoming out of reach. Like you said, fuel has just shot through, so food and everything else, everything else has just gone up. So I hear the plight of the taxi drivers. And it's the same with the small businesses as well, who've been asked to go out and purchase new vehicles or vehicles that meet the compliant, and they are facing similar hardships as yourself. So for me, it's referring it back to this committee to have a discussion. Because there's a day imminent for the minister to take a decision, legally, I have no idea where we stand, because this is a new way of working for the council. Usually it'd be an individual. Now decisions are taken by committee. And I know we've got the head of service, Tom Finnigan-Smith here, and we also have the executive director, Kate Martin. So hopefully they've taken on board what you've said. So where do we stand regarding implementation? Somebody could help me out, thank you.
Slack, come in later. So in terms of where we currently are, the decision at the Cooperative Executive on the twelfth of October, I think it was last year, is the substantive decision that then led to the submission of our final business case to government for approval. So that is with government at the moment, they're doing their assurance on that, and we are expecting their decision on that soon. In terms of the formal position, that is the formal decision of the council at this time. If the committee would like a briefing in terms of the Clean Air Zone with all members of the committee, we'd be more than happy to arrange that at the earliest kind of convenience, if that's what the committee would like.
The issue also is regarding the financial assistance, that's the key bit from what I'm picking up from drivers. Public transport, as we know, isn't as good as it used to be. Buses, we're seeing further cuts, and there's further cuts due again in September, October. So for me, how can this committee ask for further financial assistance for taxi drivers and small businesses that want to go through that transition? Are we in a position to pause this scheme? And as Nasser said, do we have up to, if you could furnish the committee with up-to-date data on the air quality as well? Sorry, we can't take a decision, and I don't want to get into a conversation with the officers. So if you could just respond to that. And Nasser, what we'll do for you is provide you with a written response. I think it's ten, is it ten working days usually?
That sounds about right.
Yeah. So thank you for that, Sarah. So, Nasser, hopefully within the next ten days, we'll provide you with a written response. And if you need to meet with us as a committee, more than happy to meet with you as well. So, Tom, if you wanted to just come in for that final bit, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's worth noting that as part of the submission of the full business case, we have been seeking authorisation from government to make changes to the financial support measures, which mainly consist of a range of grants and loans for a range of measures that people can take up, including upgrading vehicles. That follows on from the consultation that was undertaken at the end of twenty-twenty-one last year, where there was a range of feedback that we received that some of the financial support measures weren't as significant as people would want. So we have an award at the moment, a funding award of around twenty-four million pounds. We've sought flexibility in terms of the level of support we can provide through that. So that, again, will be part of the scheme, and there are increases in financial support. Should our twenty-four million pounds be drawn down and be successful in terms of delivering that and the demand still be high, there is a further eight million pounds that sits with government in their bank account that we can then kind of draw down as a stretch fund. So there is a significant amount of funding available to us to provide support to people that will potentially be affected by the need to upgrade.
Thanks for that, Tom. So if we could get a briefing note for members and a meeting. And also, could you or your officers meet up with the taxi representatives, so Nasser from GMB and fees from STTA? So it'd be really good to have a conversation with the reps on the financial support available. Thank you ever so much. Back to the agenda. We are now on item six, Transport Regeneration Climate Policy Overview. Over to Kate.
Thank you, councillor, thank you everyone. We thought it'd be useful, as this is the first committee, to share an overview for the committee and the public. Around the role, scope and remit for the Transport Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. We have put together some slides which hopefully takes a short tour through the functions. And, and the policy areas that this committee covers. It's clear to say that this is a very important committee, it has a significant programme and policy remit. And it shouldn't be underestimated how transformational and, and kind of long term some of the proposals that will come through this committee will be. In the broadest sense, it sits within the city futures portfolio and covers a range of areas. As we've heard already, around strategic transport, infrastructure, flood management, sustainability, development and regeneration. Our work in the city centre plans, our district centres and some of our regeneration corridors, including. Attercliffe and other key district areas. It also covers an oversight around our planning policy and some of our work around the local plan. And, and this committee would also receive updates and, and oversight of these sustainable growth levelling up pilots as part of the government's accelerator programme as well. I'm going to refer now to a, a number of our heads of service that are going to just take you through a number of the discrete policy areas that I've touched on. Just to share a flavour of the priorities, the strategies and some of the forthcoming areas of focus that the committee may wish to consider.
Hello, my name's Tammy Whitaker, I'm head of regeneration and property services and I'll just take you through the regeneration and development areas of, of focus. So essentially this is quite a big portfolio area, it was mentioned earlier on about the transformation that's going on in the city centre. But the committee will cover a wide range of regeneration projects, principally around physical regeneration, but also tying into other policy areas around housing and economic development. Over the last couple of years, the city council has secured over 70 million pounds worth of government funding. Which is helping to fuel transformation of the city centre and other areas of the city and regenerate. And we've been successful in securing two levelling up fund bids for Castle Gate area and for Attercliffe. We've also secured funding through the Future High Streets Fund, the Get Building Fund and the Brownfield Housing Fund. And the Towns Deal Fund for Stocksbridge, which will enable us to take forward programmes of work in key areas. The committee will have a strong role to see in steering that activity and overseeing, overseeing work and delivering on the ground to make some real changes. One of the key areas of work would be around our levelling up ambitions. Sheffield is one of three levelling up pilots announced in the government's white paper. And that will give us a real opportunity to reset the relationship with government and create a new model of joint working. And start to work across departments in government to get investment into the city to help us meet our challenges and also those of our communities. A key area of work for us will be around our city centre vision. And in October last year, the co-op executive approved a city centre vision for the city centre area. That sets out ambition for how we want to transform the city centre over the coming years. It sets out what we have done, what is to come. And a clear way forward about how the, the city centre will change over the future, how we will drive footfall. How we will get more people living and working in the city centre. And on the slide there, you'll see there are, there are five main areas, we're looking to get 20,000 more people in, in the city. Creating vibrancy and footfall, we want more, more things to do, more places to eat and drink. More culture and activity alongside the places to shop. We want an improved environment, so clean, green, safe city centre with quality public spaces. More people working in the city centre, the pandemic has had a massive impact, but people are now coming back to office developments. And that is driving footfall in the city centre. We also want a well-connected city, easy to walk, cycle and travel, easy to move around, maintaining access both to the city and within the city centre areas. Some of the main projects that the, and programmes that will be driven that are coming into this area of work, particularly around. The area shown on the map, so we've got Core Spine that runs through the city centre from High Street and Fargate. Delivering the 20.8 million pound Future High Street Fund that will look at repurposing Fargate and High Street. Work's already begun on that with the activation of the top of Fargate, looking at upper floors activity. A big project around Event Central, creating an arts and culture space on Fargate and delivering public realm. We'll also be looking at some other major council assets, particularly the Graves and Central Library. Looking at repurposing Castle Gate and the Castle Site. Working with our partners, particularly the two universities who have transformational programmes of work around their estates. Driving the city centre footfall, big investment down at Westbar. Creating one of the largest office developments in the North of England. A 300 million pound investment and 1.4 million pound square foot of space, 6,000 new jobs and 400 to 500 new homes. And then finally, the, the biggest area of work for us at the moment, which you'll have noticed as you walk through the city, is heart of the city. Backed by the city council, a 470 million pound development, 1.5 million square foot of space. 7,000 new jobs and a new public park and public realm in the city centre. And the role of this committee will help to steer and shape that activity over the coming years as, as transformation really takes place. Hand over now to Tom.
Chair, I'll, I'll just talk you through planning and in particular the local plan, which is the main piece. That will come through this committee from the planning service, there'll be other things that come alongside that. But you'll be aware, a lot, a lot of our, a lot of the planning services work go, go through planning committee. So it's just a few slides really at this point, just to sort of touch, just to, to, to remind committees why, why the local plan. And, and an up to date local plan is so important for the city. And just to, 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 to refresh us on, on, on sort of recent developments and, and what the, the committee can expect over the, over the, certainly over the next sort of. Six months or so, so in terms of why we need a local plan. So a local plan, a local plan's needed to guide future development in the city. Enabling more sustainable patterns of development and I know Tom, Tom's going to speak around strategic transport next and, and touch on some of, some of that, I'm sure. It enables us to set better design standards such as space standards and standards around carbon reduction to help us deal with the climate emergency. It protects important green spaces and countryside from unplanned development. So it's our strategic tool, if you like, in terms of, in terms of the spatial aspect of development for the city. And we've heard about the importance of heritage today and, and it's one of our key tools to make sure that we can safeguard our heritage assets. Ensures, ensures land is provided for new homes and sets the right type of requirements that we need for a city around things such as mix and affordability. And it provides and strengthens land for jobs, so it, it guides our economic growth and it makes sure that those jobs are targeted into the right places and the right areas. Other elements that a, a local plan, an up to date local plan will help the city with. Is reinforcing the role of vitality and viability of our city centre and not just the city centre, but our district and local centres. And this is where you start to see the sort of the, the, the interwoven elements of the different, the different services that feed into the committee with this, with the, the elements that Tammy's been talking about as well. It helps to ensure more consistent decision making and it provides certainty for developers and investors as well to come into the city. So really, all of that in a nutshell really is, it breeds real confidence into the city. Confidence for the city's residents, confidence for the city's businesses and for, and for investors into the city. It also makes sure that as, as, as a local council, as, as well as a committee, that we're in the driving seat for Sheffield and its residents rather than central government. Because we, I, I won't talk too much about where we are with the local plan and where we've been up to this point, but actually getting that up to date local plan. Is so important for us as a city to make sure that essentially we're in charge of our own destiny. So just a few slides now, just to talk about where we've been really, I suppose. So progress has been, it's been really positive over the last six months and. We've seen a spatial option agreed and I know there's members in the room today that pled keep heart in that, so we've seen a spatial option agreed ultimately by full council in early 2022. And really what that means is the types of land that we, we could potentially see development on as a draft local plan starts to take form. And a draft plan is being produced by the local plan team at the moment in advance of sort of coming through its, its, its decision routes before going for public consultation later in the year. So the Strategy and Resources Committee at the inaugural meeting has asked the Transport Regeneration and Climate Committee. To have oversight of the plan's development and that's not just the draft plan itself, but actually the plan's development as, as it progresses through examination towards next year. And through examination, which is likely to take us towards the end of 2024. So it, it's a big set piece really in terms of the project and the, and the oversight that this committee will have. As well as that, the, the Strategy and Resources Committee also sanctioned the, sort of for want of a better phrase, the recreation of the local plan member working group, its re-establishment. And, and that working group's been a really, a really key tool for us over the last six months and has, and has helped the progress that we've just talked about. So that local plan working, local plan member working group is not a decision-making group, it's there to provide a steer to offices around difficult policy and political issues. And through, through the oversight of the local plan as it moves through its draft towards examination. That working group, be it directly or through offices, will feed back into this committee. And at times Strategy and Resources Committee to make sure there's a public face to the progress of the local plan. And the final slide is, is just to talk around next steps, just for, around expectations. So the, the proposal at the moment, the key next step for us is to share draft site allocations with, with you as members. And that's all ward members and MPs etcetera across July and August. So the, the draft site allocations to where development might come forward in a draft plan that is, is then put forward for public consultation. And really that's a chance, it's an internal Sheffield City Council process to allow a chance for sense checking and to raise questions for, for members around those draft site allocations. To make sure that, 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 that we've, we've, we've allowed for that process before. We go out for wider public consultation and that draft plan starts to come through these committees. To seek agreement for public consultation towards the end of the year. And again, that process of, of sharing the draft site allocations for, for questions etcetera is not a decision-making stage. It, it's just one of the stages we're going through to make sure that our process is robust. Before we, we move forward to public consultation. Additional key elements over the next sort of couple of months is to seek views from the member working group on draft policies. Ahead of us presenting a draft plan to this committee in September. And the same or a similar draft plan to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee in October. Ultimately, the ambition then is, is to present a draft plan to full council, which is, is the, is the final decision-making. Vehicle in relation to the local plan in November before we move that draft plan, hopefully to public consultation towards the end of the year. So that is a bit of an overview on where the local plan is at, at this point in time Chair and I'll hand across to Tom, who's going to talk you through his, his service area.
Thank you, for those who don't know me, I'm Tom Finnigan Smith, I'm the head of Strategic Transport Sustainability and Infrastructure. I'm going to take you through three kind of key areas really for the city that the, the committee will, will no doubt have a significant involvement with moving forward. And I'll try and keep it relatively high level because dropping into the detail, we will be here all day and beyond. So the, the first of these is around transport in the city. Transport I often describe as the glue that binds people and places together. It makes a real difference to the social and economic fabric of our city. And our ambition and vision is captured in the Sheffield Transport Strategy. And obviously influenced by wider national and regional policy as well. The, the main objectives are set out there on the slide in, in terms of improved public transport, so at a local level, buses and trams. Efficient, fast networks that are reliable, clear key objectives. Where we as, as highway authority in the city council need to work across South Yorkshire. With SYMCA as the transport authority and with public transport operators. To, to address issues and deliver some of those outcomes. But it's beyond local transport as well. Regional connectivity and interregional connectivity are absolutely essential. So those broader connections to Leeds, to Manchester, Manchester Airport, which we know there are issues that need to be resolved and, and improved. All pay, play a key role in, in the city's connectivity. At a local level, we are taking a particular focus on sustainable connectivity, so obviously the public transport, but cycling and walking networks equally important, important. We've had a lot of success in the region in terms of drawing in government funding. We've taken forward our Connecting Sheffield Programme, which is our strategic programme of improvements in this area. Using Transforming Cities funding that has been secured and that will be expanded and extended as, as the, as the region have been successful with the city region Sustainable Transport Settlement. Which is a further 570 million pounds coming into the region. Obviously, transport, as I've mentioned, has that real social economic importance. But it also has, plays a key role in some of our environmental ambitions as well, both in terms of air quality. And clearly the decarbonisation of transport will be key for net zero. Moving on to the, the, the next issue, another major one around net zero. So the, the city's position in terms of its pathway to decarbonisation has been set out. In March, the 10-point plan to, for climate action was adopted by, by council. And that provides that framework and commitment to action. We'll be taking that forward through route maps that are developed through this year. And clearly bringing those through and working with the committee will be really important as those are developed. As will the, the committee's kind of influence and, and, and working across with other committees and other committee chairs. The way in which we're going to approach net zero is absolutely cross-cutting to the organisation and to many of the other policy committees that the, the council has established. So that will be essential. And the final one that I'll touch on briefly. Is our approach to how we manage flood and water in the city. The way in which we do that supports, enables a range of outcomes. Clearly protecting existing and future homes and employment sites is absolutely essential. And we take a multifaceted approach to that within the city. The flood defence schemes that we, we are delivering at the moment and have delivered previously, we have a programme that we'll be bringing forward and, and working with the committee on. But there's also nature-based solutions and, and a key part of our city transformation is, is in no part due to the way with which we manage, we manage water. So the sustainable urban drainage systems and schemes that adopt those, such as the Greater Green Scheme. And some of the flood defence works with Pocket Parks really add to the amenity and ecological and environmental benefits that are provided. And really re-establish and kind of, kind of enhance our, our, our role as the outdoor city. And I'll just leave it there, thank you Chair.
Thank you colleagues and through you Chair, as you can see, hopefully those spotlights that my colleagues have shared. Give you a sense of some of the policy areas, transport, planning, infrastructure, growth and our sustainable development work. And some of the role and remit of the committee moving forward. As you can see, it's, it's a hugely transformational agenda, it will underpin and drive forward our city strategy, which is another document that's. In development at the moment and clearly set a longer term plan for in with investment partnership. I think what's really key as well of all of these programmes. It is really important that we have solid community and business engagement as part of the development of these programmes. And that we really do deliver in an inclusive way. The size and scale and scope of many of these major projects and programmes. Do offer significant opportunities for the city, jobs, employment, health, wellbeing and other. Social and economic and environmental improvements as well. So a really important portfolio, thank you colleagues for the time. Thank you, colleagues, for the time you spent to put that information together. As a as a team, we're here to help and support the committee and we can share more information around some of these topics and some of these key policy areas as we move forward and we work together. But hopefully, that provides you with a short overview of what is quite a big and complex area and to start the work and to inform the work plan for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Kate, Michael, Tammy and Tom. Just before I ask members if they want to ask any questions, that will hopefully go on the website with a bit more narrative. Fantastic, thank you. Any questions, colleagues? councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you for the, thank you for the report. It's just a quick question because I understand the last couple of weeks, we got the response from DFT regarding the Active Travel Three schemes. And I understand that only one or two schemes in Sheffield and Doncaster were approved for funding and Barnes and Boffin got nothing. And I'm just wondering why so many of our schemes were rejected? And whether some kind of briefing or something could be shared with the committee about, you know, whether there's any kind of lessons learned or anything about how we're going to improve bids in the future?
Yes, briefly, if you would, Tom. Thanks, Chair. More than happy to arrange a briefing to to run through those issues. As he's mentioned, the this is the third tranche of active travel funding that we've been successful with. We do submit those bids through the region. So as you say, it's a South Yorkshire submission with a range of different schemes. We understand that the Department of Transport are taking a very close look at individual schemes within the overall submissions, and that's why they've they've highlighted out schemes that they they will support and unfortunately, some of those that 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 didn't receive funding. So yes, we will provide further information to the committee on on the successful Active Travel Fund Phase Three, which again will be delivering as part of our wider Connecting Sheffield Programme.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? No. Brilliant, thank you ever so. Next item is the work programme. And we've had a a pre-meeting. Like with many of these reports, we've not really as a committee had an opportunity to contribute. So at the pre-meeting, I did suggest to to members that we agree what's on here today. We go away and work between now and the next meeting to look at how we can add, take things off or any comments colleagues have. So rather than go into it into further detail unless there's something glaring important that you want to say, then yes, but I would like to, as I suggested, get these discussions underway and then have a a formal discussion in September. So but councillor Shaw's got his hand up, go on.
Thank you, Chair. The the only thing that stood out for me was about the the item on the agenda in the work programme regarding the Chief Valley Cycle Route and presenting the final scheme proposals. My understanding is that is the deadline for implementation of that scheme will be before our next meeting. So seems a little after the fact to receive something about the proposals by then.
You must be telepathic, councillor Shaw, because we we have been discussing this and I think we are going to be organising another meeting to to take that decision. I don't know if Tom wants to add anything.
So, thank you, Chair, yes. We we will need to bring forward a report potentially in terms of the objections to any TRO that is promoted. So we will need to bring that forward in terms of the the delivery timeframe. So it is one that we will potentially alongside another item, need to to try and find some urgent provision for the committee to consider so that scheme, subject to that decision being made, can move through to its full delivery.
councillor Shaw?
Thanks, Chair. So just to clarify on the implementation deadline, is that the deadline for work to be completed or for all the money to be spent or for all the work to have been started?
So, thank you, Chair. The the issue is that, and it's slightly confusing, that the project is being funded from two sources of 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 funding, both a a government part that does need to be spent by a certain date. So works associated with that funding need to be delivered. And then there is a a further gain share allocation, which is a city region allocation that is also in that funding menu, which has a longer timeline in terms of delivery. So we're balancing off those two issues, looking at the programme, working with city region colleagues on that delivery. More than happy to provide more more details on the nuance around around that and how we're managing that if that's needed.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I'd like to say is how are we going to deliver local programmes using community infrastructure levy? As far as I can tell, we're just going around in in circles and there's, you know, there's a fair amount of money available locally to deliver schemes which, you know, we've got one or two in our ward, which local people would like to would like to support. And generally, Chair, people ask me for schemes that would in would work towards our ambition for improving active travel, danger reduction, road safety. So I think we should take an interest in that. It might also help with with issues around the budget because it it would provide work and and funding. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome for the for the comment. So if we pick this under the discussions I've just mentioned.
I thought of getting early, or probably late really, considering I think it's been under discussion for a while.
Yeah. But we're going to pick that up, so thank you. Sarah, I understand you want to do the technical bits?
The work programme?
Yeah.
Sarah, do you want me? Yeah, I mean, Chair, all all I was going to say on this is really to reiterate the words that 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 you've put out there. This is a live document, it belongs to the committee and the committee, you know, they have an opportunity to contribute to this and and that can be done outside of this meeting and in this meeting as well. I just wanted to draw your attention to section three and three to five, where it talks about references from council. There were a series of questions and petitions submitted to council on the first of June, which you responded to, Chair. There were just a couple of outstanding ones in there that that needed to be included and need some further action.
Thank you for that, Craig. So colleagues, happy to to to, is it note or agree?
It's 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 to agree and then to to go away and consider how you want to, what things you want to add and suggest for officers to look into adding.
Thank you, Craig. I'm glad we have you and Sarah next to me with the the technical bits. So colleagues, if we could agree the report. Thank you ever so much. Next item is the Budget Monitoring Report. Over to Ryan. I understand, Mike and Tammy, if you wanted to to go.
Chair, we'll stay for this item if it's okay, just in case there's anything that needs to come in relation to our service areas.
Cheers. Over to you, Ryan.
Thanks very much, Chair. My name's Ryan Kiworth, I'm the council's director of finance and commercial services. You'll see from the report that the council's in a very challenging financial position. And this, most of this, the report that's before this committee today is the same as has been to the Strategy and Resources Committee and is going to every other policy committee. So the front of the report, which sets out the council's overall position and the back of the report, which sets out the budget timetable for twenty three, twenty four, is common to the reports that I'm delivering to to each policy committee. Obviously, the bit in the middle that relates directly to this committee is 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 specific to to your to your report. Council's in a very challenging financial position as the as the report sets out. We finished last year almost twenty million pounds overspent. That position did improve towards the very end of the year, but for one off reasons, that leaves still a very significant and unsustainable underlying financial overspend. Council allocated seventy million pounds of reserves to support the budget and to give us time and space to get the budget on a on a sustainable footing over the medium term. We've obviously used almost twenty of that, seventy now to balance last year's budget. We also used fifteen million of reserves to set a budget in March twenty two for the current twenty two, twenty three financial year. As part of the budget that we set in March, fifty three million pounds of savings were agreed to be delivered. And against the risk of delivering those savings, council further earmarked twenty five million of reserves to cover timing and delivery risk against some of those savings. And you'll note from the report that in this particular committee's area, there are one or two savings that are slipping a little bit. So we've got some reserves set aside to support that, but obviously, one off reserves can only really deal with one off issues rather than ongoing issues. The report also shows how the budget of the council has progressed over the relatively long term, actually. Significant investment over time has gone into children's and adult social care. And that's required other services in the council, including those services covered by this committee, to be, to see their funding reduce, to allow continued investment and support to to children's and adult social care. And the report sets that out quite clearly. That's a position that's pretty common to other local authorities. It's not a, it's not a Sheffield specific. I could pick similar charts out from other councils' budget monitoring reports over across the country. So it's not a, not a particular issue for Sheffield, but it is something that's worth of note. As at month one this year, we are reporting a eighteen point seven million pound forecast overspend for this financial year. Month one's quite an early point in the year to do this, so there is potential for that position to improve or to change in other ways. Much of the overspend that we're forecasting at the moment results from delays in implementing some of those fifty three million pounds of budget savings that were approved at council in March. There are also some pressures relating, for example, to energy costs that we're currently containing on a one off basis, but that will start to become an issue as we move into into twenty three, twenty four. So from a perspective of this committee, it's a one point seven million pound overspend. Most of that relates to delays in implementing the Clean Air Zone that we've spoken about already at this meeting. And that puts the planned income for for this scheme for this year at risk. Obviously, if that delay or if the scheme changes or that delay continues, that might creep into next year's figures. But that's something for the committee to consider over time. There are a couple of other issues relating to income from Electric Works and the Planning Service that again are contributing to that one point seven million pound overspend. The the council's overall financial position means that I've recommended to Strategy and Resources Committee, they've approved bringing forward the budget timetable for next year. That position is 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 looking challenging as the report sets out. There are no indications from government at this stage that we're going to get any financial support above that, which we've already been informed of. And even if we were to get additional support, we probably wouldn't find out until far too late in the process. We would normally hear about spending announcements in the Autumn Statement, which is typically in October. That would then feed through into a specific settlement for Sheffield City Council at some point during December. That's far too late for us to to set a budget. So the 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 way we've decided to approach this is to be relatively prudent in our assumptions on the budget setting process, in the hope rather than the expectation that we'll receive some additional funding late in the day that members will have some choices about at that point. I'd much rather see that position than a position where we take an aggressive stance now and then have to come back at Christmas requiring further savings from committees at incredibly short notice. I trust you will support me in that. So the Strategy and Resources Committee will receive a a medium term financial analysis report from me on the fifth of July at the next meeting, together with recommendations on budget targets for the committees, for this committee included. And that's about three months earlier than we would have historically run a budget process. And that will require policy committees to do work over the course of the summer to develop budget proposals in line with the targets that Strategy and Resources will be asked to set. What I'm asking for is a report back to this committee at the September meeting, setting out how the committee intends to balance its budget. And we'll then aggregate all the various policy committee reports through to Strategy and Resources for the twelfth of October meeting of that committee. It'll then be for Strategy and Resources to decide from hopefully a balanced position whether it wants to reallocate resources between policy committees, depending on the discussions that that committee has at the time. My hope is that we can conclude the budget process at the Strategy and Resources Committee finally on the fifth of December at that meeting there, which will be in time for full council on the first of February, where the housing rent needs to be set as part of the Housing Committee's normal report to to full council. And then the first of March, where we set council tax and the rest of the council's budget as members who have been around a while will be familiar. Thank you, Chair. Obviously, happy to take any questions, hopefully with the support of officers if you get into a bit of detail.
Timetables are are really scary. I was hoping to take some time off in the summer, but this work programme. But I'll I'll bring in folks as I seem. Councillor Gillian, if you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. My question, I guess, is around you're setting the budget quite early. We're in a very high inflationary period at the moment. And obviously, we use the cost of living rises to set rents and rates and things like that. Will will doing this early have any impact? And when are these set nationally? What month do we have to think of these cost of living rises?
Thanks very much for the question. We are having to forecast, if you like, or estimate what we think the inflation levels will be at the various points in the future where contract prices or things like housing rents or wage rises or whatever they might be are triggered. In in some cases, trigger points are in September, some cases, they can be as late as January or February. So we're having to make estimates at this stage as to what we think that might be. That's the best we can do. We'd have to make estimates in any event because we always end up trying to look a bit further forward than some of these national triggers come to us. Yeah, there there is always a risk though. The further forward you try and look, you are, we are definitely taking a risk on some of that. I'd rather take a prudent approach to that and we've we've allowed, you know, and it and it seemed, it seemed, it seems crazy to to me, looking back even a couple of years, you know, eight or nine percent inflation on some contracts we're looking at because that's where we seriously think RPI and CPI will be towards the end of this year when some of the major contract trigger points occur.
Any other questions or comments? councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. It's just a question about, just a clarification, because in in the report, it refers to BIPs as both Budget Implementation Plans and Business Improvement Plans. So I'm just wondering which is which?
If you could refer to the page, so allows of the members.
Page thirty three of the pack.
Thank you, councillor Shaw.
Fair point and well spotted. I normally refer to them as Budget Implementation Plans, so I think a slightly different definitions crept in. They are the, they are the specific savings in detail that are approved by full council as part of the budget implementation process.
Does that answer your point, councillor Shaw?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Anybody else, councillor? Ruth?
Yeah, can I ask the committee to consider what actions as a council we can take to bring in additional income to the Transport Committee? Perhaps we can discuss this at the next meeting as an agenda item.
Happy to to take that on board and hopefully we've got all our offices round here, so hopefully they'll, since we've got all our offices here, so hopefully they'll have heard what you've said and will report back. But being in this role for a a number of years, whatever income we raise, councillor, so we will never find enough cash to bridge the the gap. I mean, the government's cut us hundreds of millions over the last twelve years and it's coming back in the thirteenth year, trying to ask us to to find more or raise revenue, like you say. And there will be opportunities, so hopefully heard what you've said and we'll bring something back for this committee to to discuss. A comment from me, if I can. We've had the, we had a petition in at full council regarding the Clean Air Zone. We've heard today the the impact it's having out there. For me, it feels like it's a unfair burden, if that's the right word, to put on on the service because it's not a scheme that's, I mean, depending on what we discuss and agree. I'd like to understand, is the one point two million, is that fines or? I'd like to understand what the one point two million pound income I'd like to understand what the one point two million pound income that we're expecting is from. And as I say, I do find it a bit challenging for the service. So does, so my second question is, if the, if the scheme is delayed or if it happens on time, there's still a slippage there, is that picked up corporately or is that pushed back on to the, the service? Cheers.
So the one point two million income that's referred to there is, is, is the, the income from the scheme? So that would be from charges levied as part of the scheme? And that, that, that would be both charges paid by people who were paying as required in the scheme and also I, I guess from fines levied for people who failed to pay as, as required by the scheme? If the scheme, for, for whatever reason, doesn't go ahead, that does fall on this committee as it stands right now?
Not going to labour the point, but it, it does need a discussion. I do think it's an unfair position to put the service on there, but not looking for an answer today. But if we can, when we have these discussions with all of us, it'd be good to, to pick it up there. I hear what councillor Ruth said earlier about income generation, which is key. But fines as a way of bringing in income, I think that's a difficult one to swallow at the moment. So yeah, it'd be good to, to have a, a wider discussion. Thank you. On to the next item, item nine, the Sheffield Local Transport Programme. Tom, all to you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll introduce this item. My colleague David may assist in terms of some of the responses. So the report sets out for approval this year's Transport Capital Programme. The programme is set out in Appendix A and includes the Local and Neighbourhood Transport Complimentary Programme, which is a fund which has a very snappy title, obviously. That replaces what most people might know as the Local Transport Plan Fund. The, the, the funding we receive is through the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authorities' City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement, which the DFT have provided to the region. There is an allocation for, for Sheffield of five point eight million pounds, of which one point two million pounds is expected to be spent in, at next financial year in twenty-three, twenty-four. There is also the, the Road Safety Fund, which was a four million pounds council allocation from the Corporate Investment Fund. Those schemes are all set out at Appendix A. For the Local Neighbourhood Transport Complimentary Programme, those are set out in themes. So the schemes that we developed for the programme align with our Sheffield Transport Strategy that I mentioned earlier, but also align with national and regional policies and have core objectives that are set out of paragraph two point four of the report. A great deal of the, the kind of programme is focused on those local improvements, those road safety, accessibility, traffic management improvements. But the, the, the programme set out for approval, whilst it doesn't include those strategic projects and will be bringing committee updates on, on each of the projects in the Connecting Sheffield Programme and hopefully having a fuller briefing with you soon on the overall programme. It's just worth noting that the, the programme in front of you today does also form part of an effective way of, of drawing in additional strategic funds to act as a complementary or match fund. So some of the active travel, some of the CRSTS, some of the, the funds that are available from government, we do use this local transport programme to support external funding. So in terms of the recommendations, and if approved, schemes within the programme will be developed through the council's capital gateway process. There will clearly be fully kind of a full consultation and engagements with local communities. And ultimately, approval will be provided by the Strategy and Resources Finance Subcommittee. The recommend, further recommendation is for a delegation. And to facilitate the efficient delivery of schemes within the programme, a delegation is sought to allow any reserved commissioning decisions that may be required as part of developing these schemes through to implementation stage would be made by the head of Strategic Transport and Sustainability and Infrastructure, which is, which is me. Those are mainly in relation to options, whether there are options that need to be considered through to kind of the, the capital gateway process and ultimately to finance subcommittee. Any objections to issues such as traffic regulation orders would, would clearly need to come back to committee as a number of the reports further on the agenda actually set out. So there'd be full feedback and, and consultation through that process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Take some questions. Council Grokka?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the, for the paper. It's just some clarification for me, if you could please, in relation to page fifty-one and the Road Safety Programme. Am I correct in thinking that this four million pounds is the four million pounds that was put aside, I don't know, in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, when the Labour Party put the, the Labour Group put the amendment into the budget amendment, that we would have the road safety scheme? Because clearly we wanted to make sure that we could deal with a number of outstanding road safety issues across the city and, and we needed the funding to do that. A lot of these look terribly familiar from when I had the responsibility back in twenty-twenty-one. So I'm just wondering why we, we haven't progressed any further with any of them?
Tom?
So respond, thank you. Thank you for the question. So broadly, yes, it is that four million pound allocation within the budget. The, the, the process of developing these schemes has been affected by some of our more strategic programme work and our capacity over the last few years. We went through a process of having kind of urgent schemes that government wanted us to take action on. That, that, that did influence and impact on delivery, as, as well as a time at which we had unprecedented levels of kind of more strategic funding coming through. The report does pick up on some of those kind of capacity challenges that we do face. You know, they're industry-wide, but we're hoping that we have now come to a position where the, the service does have more staffing capacity through recent recruitment, which has been successful. And we're now resetting this and we've, we've already undertaken engagement with a number of the LAX back chairs in terms of how we take forward this programme.
Thank you, Tom. Council Auckland?
I just made the same point then about urging a, you know, getting a local programme through LAX underway using the funding that is already available, Chair. This is just a, I've just, just a question. Under cycling on page fifty-five, we've got something called Covid debtors. What is that? I've got the feeling it might be a question I should know the answer to, but I can't work it out.
There we go, that's better, it's right now. So yeah, thank you for your, thank you for your question, councillor, councillor Auckland. It's, the honest answer is, it's as a result of some additional money that we got through the Emergency Active Travel Fund Scheme for, for some interventions that we put in around the city. So it was, it was linked to Covid. The cost, the cost of those have actually ended up being slightly more than, than the, the original Emergency Active Travel Fund allocation came to. From memory, the exact value is around about fourteen thousand pounds. So it's, it's, it's a case of, you know, funding what went in as part of that particular, that, but part of that particular income stream.
Answer your point, how's that? Brilliant. Thank you, David, for that. Ruth?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions, please. First of all, about the anti-idling signs, which are listed as ten thousand pounds. Is there any evidence that these have been effective? And the second question is the Barkby Road steps. Can somebody tell me whether these are the metal steps that were talked about previously, which were very expensive and potentially quite dangerous, or is it something different? Thank you.
Tom or David?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor. In terms of the, the position around anti-idling, I think the, 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 the evidence of its success can't be measured in terms of the enforcement of it from a issuing of fines sense. So we've, we've rolled out anti-idling a number of sites across the city, particularly around all schools in, in the city. The way it's enforced is that effectively our wardens attend site. And if they see somebody that is idling, they inform that driver that they must switch off their engines. It's only after that advice has been provided, if somebody refuses to do that, that effectively a, a fixed penalty notice can be issued. Now, habitually, the, the kind of evidence is that we haven't been issuing fixed penalty notices. So the, the, the kind of advice that people are offered, or the occurrences of idling are, are, are not there. So the, the wider issue is part of the educational angle with anti-idling, the signs on street, but also the, the banners that we erect at schools as, as kind of that, 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 that advice to people about the impact of their behaviour. So it's a behavioural change issue as much as it is a hard-edged enforcement. David, do you want to touch on Barkby Road?
Yeah, in, in terms of, in terms of Barkby Road steps, it's, it's currently included within the programme on the basis that it has an, it has an existing capital approval. However, in, in terms of the, the practical implementation of the scheme, where, where it, it's, it's not one that is, is actively progressing and I can't see it, you know, actively progressing over the, over the next twelve months. As you rightly, as you rightly point out, there's, there's two potential solutions in, in that particular location, one of which is based on, you know, replacing existing wooden steps and another does link to, does link to putting in some, some metal steps, which as you say, you know, are that bit more expensive, but tend to have a, a lower ongoing maintenance cost. And I think as, as a service, we just need to work with both, both local members and the committee to make sure that, you know, when, you know, when a, a solution is, is determined for that particular site, it's, it's the one that, you know, you know, best meets everybody's aspirations. Now, the route is, is actually very, very close to a school. So if we were actually implementing that particular scheme, it would be over the summer holidays. So as I say, it's, it's not likely to progress in, in terms of any, any significant financial spend this year. We would look to, we'd look to get a, a decision in terms of what the committee would like to see achieved this year for implementation next.
Thank you for your response, David, and welcome to Andrew as well. Sorry, I missed you up. Councillor Sangar?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report and it's good to see the return of, return of, of many favourites as councillor Grokka and councillor Auckland have already mentioned. What I'm struggling for is in terms of, it's good to ha, it's good to have them, have particularly all these twenty mile per hour schemes, but a lot of them still have the, the status concept. And it's really trying to understand how many of them we are expecting to deliver in this financial year. Because many of these schemes I remember from twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. And yeah, it has been, as the Chair said, it has been a challenging decade, but even notwithstanding that, I think we would hope that we would get, make significant progress down, down, down this, down this list this year. I think my other point I'd like to make, Chair, again, I know I've said it six times in the last twelve months, but there must come a time when we can give some of the delegated decision-making to the LAX on some of the local schemes. Not the strategic schemes, not the same schemes that are important in terms of interconnectivity between Sheffield and other cities. We absolutely get, I absolutely get that that has got to stay at a strategic level. But there must be some local schemes where some of the consultation work and the feedback on decisions can go to the LAX for, for a decision. I know we made that point at governance committee, but I think we'll keep making it because I'm, I really want this committee to stay strategic, if at all possible. But yeah, it's good to have the list and clearly that gives the list to work through throughout the year. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you for, for, for the question and comments. It's something that I know councillor Grokka on behalf of our group has been raising it, not just at Labour Group, but at the governance committee, I hope she doesn't mind me saying this, but she's been pushing the, the same message as yourself. We've now got local area committees and we need to, to look at how we can devolve some of this activity. We are going to be discussing this as part of our workshop discussion, so it'd be good to, to include that in, on top of the million and one of the things we're expected to, to look at. But regarding the, the twenty mile per hour zones, one of the questions I was going to ask once we got to, to the two items there was, A, it mentions we've achieved so many, but how many do we have across the city? It'd be good to understand what is the, the overall figure for the city and how are we trying to reach that figure? And supporting what both councillor Grokka and councillor Sangar have said, it'd be good to understand, is there an opportunity to accelerate some of these across the city? The reason I say that, and I was going to comment at the end, but I'll do it now. Last week, Paul Blomfield MP sent both me and councillor Grokka an email which referenced a local government report which had highlighted that Sheffield is the second worst city, and I'll repeat that, the second worst city in the country for accidents and fatalities amongst young people, not to fifteen. So I welcome the four million pound, councillor Grokka, that we as a, a Labour Group approved a couple of years ago. That will address some of these issues that we've picked up. But as part of that workshop, it would be worth, and thank you for your response as well, Tom. In Tom's response to Paul Blomfield's question was, what is the authority doing? What Tom responded back by saying, he's asked his officers to investigate and there are a number of other stakeholders like South Yorkshire Police and others, Road Safety Partnership, that also need to work with us to, to develop the, the road safety programme. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Tom?
I'll just add, Chair, absolutely happy to, to work through the, the workshop with committee around the kind of the transport programme, in particular some of the, the kind of decision-making activity that will need to, to kind of come forward so that the, the effective delivery of these schemes can, can be kind of managed as much as possible within the year. We've tried to indicate the, the balance between delivery this year and, and next year, particularly with the, I'll call it the LTP side of, of the programme in terms of indicating the financial spend across, across years. More than happy to bring and provide committee with something that shows that for the Road Safety Fund as well. So you get that, that sense of the delivery across the year, if that would be useful. And, and picking that up more broadly in terms of programme setting within further committee briefings.
Thank you for your response. So if I ask Kate a question, Julie does a dual role as deputy leader, the governance committee, because it won't be just our committee that's asking to, to delegate work to local area committees. If this could be picked up on our behalf and fed down councillor Grokka?
Yeah, the, the LAX Chair of Chairs meeting last year, who, the LAX Chairs meet on a regular basis, they actually did a piece of work and put together a scheme whereby if there are issues that members want to see delegated across to the LAX as opposed to being done in a committee, there is a process in place. So that already is there in terms of how things can be done. I don't think anybody's actually sat down and looked at it and used it yet. So I think for me, that's something that needs to properly come to the governance committee so that the governance committee can look at it, be clear about how we, how we will work and what it can be used for. And then perhaps because there are such a lot of local schemes in here that would benefit from not only local member involvement, but obviously local community involvement through the LAX, it, it may be sensible that we can perhaps look at how we would do that as part of the work that we're doing on, you know, that we already ongoing. So there is a piece of work that is, that is already in, in place, that's, that's actually there.
Well done. Kate, did you want to come in?
Thank you for that, Chair. Just to add, add to that, I mean, I'm happy to take that away on behalf of the exec team as well to, to feed that in and follow up the comments from councillor Grokka. Also, I think this case, this committee does need to consider, as you know, there is the potential for appointing a subcommittee as part of this. And there are a number of areas, as I have highlighted in the, through the presentation and plus the work plan, a significant amount of business as part of this committee. I think it's important, if we're looking at how we delegate as well, also, also to bear in mind that that subgroup arrangement may be to focus on, you know, transport or other policy matters. mind that that subgroup arrangement may be to focus on transport or other policy matters that can be put together if needed as well, as another way around handling this. That doesn't obviously link to the Lacks in terms of that local engagement and that's something that we'd have to think about as part of that. But there is that option within the governance structure, as I understand it and appreciate, you know, we're still finding our way with some of this, so I'll seek some further advice on that.
Brilliant. And it's good to hear we've got a bit of a toolkit there, councillor Grokot, which is great news. Any more questions or comments? No, brilliant. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, just before we go on that, Sarah, because you highlighted to me that we've got 10 minutes per item, is it possible we could put some time slots to each item in the future? Because it's two and a half hours, we've had loads of public questions and petitions and we've got 13 items, so it helps us all to keep focused and succinct. So the next item is Worsley Road, Staveley Road, item 10. And again, just an observation from myself, and I did mention this to Tom Finnegan Smith when I met with him yesterday, I did find this report hard to follow, as I said to you yesterday. Number of issues in there, I couldn't really understand how many residents we'd written to, frontages didn't really make much sense, how many objections and for and so forth, that wasn't really as clear. If I look at reports number 11 and 12, very structured, that information is there, you can easily, you've got a heading which says responses and so forth. But just an observation from me as the Chair, that I did find that report hard to follow. But the other two are really good examples of, you know, they were consistent and I was able to get the information. So I don't know if other colleagues had a similar challenge as myself, I've no idea. But if I hand over to, is it Tom? Are you going to be presenting the report?
Thanks, Chair. I'll hand over to my colleague, Andrew Maud, in a minute, who'll take us through some of the details. But just on that, more than happy to pick that up and we can have a look at some of the formatting and consistency if that would be useful to the committee.
Thank you.
Hi, afternoon. Andrew Maud, Senior Engineer, Strategic Transport and Infrastructure. And I will be picking up on some of those queries that you've just mentioned there through this presentation. So Glover Road, London Road, Staveley Road, Woolsey Road, two schemes which contribute to improving an identified key strategic cycle linked to and from the city and which were consulted on as part of the Sheaf Valley corridor in 2021. The Glover Road scheme improves an existing vehicular closure with new islands and waiting restrictions. And the Staveley Road, Woolsey Road scheme provides a signalised junction to assist crossing cyclists and pedestrians. We consulted 17 frontages in and around Glover Road, in and around the Turning Head, together with London Road businesses, and 69 frontages on Woolsey Road and Staveley Road, and several objections were received. Objections focused on the loss of parking associated with the changes. Officers have worked with those who have objected to try and address the actual loss of parking at the two locations. But having said that, four objections on Glover Road, London Road, and two objections on Staveley Road, Woolsey Road remain, which are documented in the report. At Staveley Road, Woolsey Road, to mitigate the loss of parking associated with the changes, we are proposing an experimental traffic regulation order to implement a loading bay on Staveley Road. This was supported by the adjacent shop and proposed to allow parking at all times in a new unrestricted bay on the south side of Woolsey Road between Staveley Road and Abidale Road. This is a like-for-like in terms of number of spaces. We don't need approval for the ETROs for the mitigation and following a monitoring period, we would bring the amendments back to a future meeting to either take them out, make them permanent, or make further changes. At Glover Road, to mitigate the loss of parking, we are also proposing an experimental traffic regulation order to protect the southern part of the Turning Head only on a Friday, which would allow access for the bin lorry and allow parking overnight on a section of London Road. We will also consult on the removal of a disabled bay, which has been advised is no longer required. Again, we don't need the approval for the ETROs and the mitigation, but will monitor and bring back any future changes to a meeting. Officers have considered other options. On these schemes, together with Cycle Sheffield, have looked to mitigate the loss of parking where possible as outlined. Through the changes, we consider the correct balance has now been achieved between parking and active travel provision and ask for the approval to the schemes and associated TROs so we can move these two forward to construction.
Thank you, Andrew. Take questions? Councillor Grokot, and I'll just go around the room, I've got you folks. Chair.
Thank you, Chair. It relates to page 60 where it talks about the no waiting and no loading provisions. And it's just a comment really, I've been in a meeting with my local neighbourhood policing team this morning and we are in the process of removing an experimental road traffic order in my ward because the police have said that they don't have the wherewithal, the resource to enforce. And I would imagine that that's going to be pretty much the same for the police across the city. So my concern is, in light of the fact that we're saying we're going to be putting the, you know, the no waiting, the no loading restrictions on there, but then when we go into the public consultation on page 63 at 5.1, we talk about the road regularly being blocked by vehicles, et cetera. So my concern is, we're putting this on to try and stop that, but actually, is it going to be enforceable? So is it going to work?
Andrew, I'm just conscious of time, so if I take three questions and then bring you in, if that's all right? Brilliant, thank you for that.
I've actually got six questions, so I'll have to prioritise now. Who else wants to ask questions? Because...
Well, it's fine.
Pardon? Okay. I was wondering if bollards could be installed on the section of Asline Road as part of this scheme, because there's a problem with that being part of Sheaf Valley Way in that there's frequently drivers that park on there, including coaches on football match days, and it means that that cycleway is frequently blocked and obstructed. So is the facility to put in some permanent bollards, concrete bollards along there? Also, in terms of enforcement, how much enforcement could you expect to see on the new double yellow lines at the end there of Glover Road? And can additional bollards be placed on the corner of Staveley Road and Glover Road in order to make sure that people don't park illegally on the corners and obstruct visibility there? And I was really pleased to see that there's going to be a crossing at Glover Road. I noticed that officers are going to monitor that. Can I check what they're actually monitoring for in terms of the prioritisation of cyclists across there? And I wondered if there was opportunity for the planters to be moved further towards London Road so as to prevent parking on the double yellow lines on that section between the end of Glover Road and London Road? Thank you.
Only five, you said six?
Oh, I've missed one. I noticed that there's no waiting on a section of London Road and there will be parking overnight, but I'm just wondering which part of London Road this is? Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And I'd councillor Shaw next.
Thank you, Chair. I've got just three questions on this. I'll try to be quick. So I've seen comments from the Sheffield North West Neighbourhood Police Team regarding these proposals because of the issues elsewhere in the city with planters being vandalised. They've asked whether these planters will have, you know, a concrete ballast in them to prevent them being moved or tipped over and whether they'll be fastened down. On page 59, where it's talking about the existing bollards being regularly removed, are they, who's removing them? Is that us or unauthorized? And finally, the new crossing on Staveley Road, Woolsey Road, I understand there's issues with other similar crossings with sometimes the sensors not picking up approaching cyclists. So will there be like a backup button on that crossing in case, you know, so that people aren't being left waiting unduly? Thank you, Chair.
If you could just switch your mic off. Do you want me to start on some of them, Andrew?
No, I'm okay, I think. So the first one, can we enforce and how much enforcement? We can enforce through Parking Services. I am aware of a round that Parking Services use in that area, so we can add that on to the daily routine. This, I mean, the changes to the planters, I mean, that is a key element of this scheme in that we plan to put them in in tree F curbing, so they won't be able to be moved. We realise that this is a little bit unsightly, but it does the job. It allows cyclists to and from each way through a different design to move through the space so they can choose different alignments rather than just the one alignment that they've got at the minute. And we plan to also put a couple of trees within the tree F curbing as well to improve the look of that closure. The Asline Road bollards, yes, we can look into adding those as part of that Sheaf Valley improvement. Bollards at Staveley and Glover, yes, again, I'm aware that parking does occur on that corner. And to keep it free for pedestrians, we can look to put some bollards in there as part of the scheme. The Woolsey Road, Staveley Road crossing, we will be monitoring it. We are aware currently there are circa 250 cycling manoeuvres sort of in one direction in the morning and back in the evening, so it's a well-used route. We'd like to get some counters on there, obviously, once we've got the scheme in, see how populated it is, we will make adjustments accordingly then so that the direct and quick travel for cyclists is maintained across that crossing. There was a question about where on London Road...
It is towards London Road.
Parking would be made available, that is in front of the Toolhire shop. There's a section of carriageway there that wouldn't need to be kept free, it can accommodate three vehicles, we feel that we can do that to add additional residential parking overnight, where currently there are no provisions for residents on London Road. Will the planters be vandalised? I've answered that really in terms of the design and that we're looking to put some tree F curbing in, so they will not be removed. Unauthorized removal of bollards at Glover Road, yes, they are being removed sometimes in the middle of the night and therefore vehicles can make their way to and from London Road as a rat run. This is occurring on a regular basis, so the tree F curbing will hopefully address that. Sensors, backup bollards for crossing. I've missed the final point, sorry.
It was in relation to the backup to the sensor in the approach to the...
Yeah, so we have trialled some new systems across the Ring Road for cycle crossings, which look to pick up cyclists on approach. That technology is evolving, so we, again, will look to implement better sensors at this crossing and update as technology improves.
Yes, thank you very much for answering those. I just wanted to know about the tree F curbing, but the question that I forgot to ask you previously was, was the scope to reduce the speed limit on Worsley Road to 20 miles an hour in order to make it safer there? And also I read through the notes and it said that it might actually increase parking capacity, which might help with some of the objections. But more of the priority is to try and make it a safer road with lower speed limits?
I think through the crossing in at Staveley-Woolsey Junction, we're actually narrowing the carriageway there. We're narrowing it down to 6.5 metres and then the provision of a parking bay then on that southern side will further provide a consistent 6.5 metres then through to Abidale Road. So I think through the engineered changes, we will reduce speeds on that road.
Thank you, Andrew. Got Craig next and then Gillian.
So...
Thanks, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to echo the point that was made about needing to keep this committee strategic because my first instinct on reading this was that it ought to really be predominantly a matter in terms of the detail for the Ward Councils and so on. I emailed the three Ward Councilors and had a reply from councillor Garbutt, who said that he's happy on balance that, bear in mind all of the restrictions, it's the best scheme it can be, with some concerns about the exacerbation of traffic, particularly for Friday prayer times for Woolsey Road Mosque, and maybe some work could be done. Councillor Basharat got back to me and she's actually said that she's in the process of arranging some meetings with the mosque to begin some of that work and has raised some of the queries about balancing the strategic need for us to improve cycle routes and encourage people out of their cars where we can possibly do so with the impacts that that has for local residents. And councillor Basharat suggested possibly that she would be happy to host the committee to do a site visit, to show us around and show us some of the pinch points, if that was something that the committee decided that we wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugh. I'd councillor Christie, no? Councillor Hirst?
Thank you, Chair. It's just a comment really. Thank you to Craig for that piece of work that he's done, because in reading this through, I couldn't see, my concern was that it would have an impact on the mosque and the worshippers there, and I couldn't see that they'd been involved. I'm glad that you've checked with local members and thank you to Nigga for the work that she's doing in the community and I for one would really welcome that. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, just, I mean, well done councillor Pugh for contacting the local members. Is there a section in here where we can include, you know, local members have been consulted? I think it's important. And for me, I'll take Chair's priority because nobody else has put their hands up, it'd be good to understand how many car parking spaces residents are losing. The report does refer to an impact on a number of businesses, but it does make reference, some of that is being mitigated, loading is being allowed. So for me, it'd be good to understand what the impact on local residents and businesses are. And I think there was an offer of a site visit, which for me, I would find that helpful. I don't know about other members.
So just to respond to the member...
So just to respond to the member comments in terms of consultation, on all local schemes, we do contact local members for their views. We'll make sure that that is explicitly kind of confirmed in reports. Within this scheme, we had, because it forms part of that wider Sheaf Valley strategic corridor, we did also have a member forum in terms of, I can't remember, it was online discussion meeting with local members on the scheme as well. So that might be some of the comments coming through around the balance between the specific impacts at this location and that wider strategic benefit. I'll hand over to Andrew in terms of the numbers of vehicles displaced and the parking issues there.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, so on Woolsey, Staveley, for the double yellow lines to keep those areas free on the approach to the new signals, there would be nine spaces, approximately nine spaces on Woolsey and six on Staveley that we'd have to take out. That is mitigated by the unrestricted parking bay on the southern side, which I mentioned, which would put approximately 15 spaces back in. So like-for-like in terms of taking out and putting back in. Glover Road, approximately three spaces, I believe that would be lost. But again, the mitigation is the three spaces that can be used overnight on London Road and allowing parking actually in the turning head, which a number of residents did say they used and were worried about losing. We would just, through the ETRO, put in a restriction that would keep that free for the bin wagon to access on a Friday.
Thank you for that, Andrew. Question of site visit, do we need a site visit? Got a couple nodding, a couple saying no. How...
I think, Chair, in terms of it being part of the wider scheme, I think it might be useful if we could incorporate a site visit to look at this along with the wider scheme so that we've got, you know, a better strategic idea of, you know, what is happening with the connecting Sheffield schemes. That may be helpful.
That's very helpful. Councillor Auckland?
I'm going to agree with Gillian, looking at the wider scheme. In terms of the detail, completely, there's the whole issue about Lacks, local members, and, you know, how that's looked at. In terms of the Sheaf Valley overall, not our ward, comes into Greys Park Ward, it's a sort of thing that I think we've got, you know, we've got to do. It's a suitable place to try something and see how it works.
Councillor Pugh?
Strategically speaking.
Thank you. Councillor Pugh?
Thank you. I would just second what Julie, councillor Brokot, said. I think we've got a Ward Councillor who's invited us and said, please, would we come and be allowed to be shown the local impact and the local detail by her and the other Ward members? I think we should take that offer up. I don't necessarily agree that it should be our role to be delving into that degree of detail. We have officers informed by Ward, you know, local members for that. But until we hammer out how it can be delegated effectively to the Lacks or to the Ward members, and it remains with this committee, then I think we ought to actually take that invitation up.
Seems like we're having a site visit. Happy to do that. But, sorry, let me rephrase that. And thank you for that, councillor Auckland. It'd be good to understand the wider scheme and how this fits in. So, yeah, colleagues are happy with that? Yeah. So we'll have a site visit. Yes, that's what it seems like. We're having a site visit. And then we come back the next meeting and take the decision.
So, confused me because we were told it was an experimental order. We're asking to approve it, but we don't need to approve an experimental order. So the recommend, it struck me all of this was, in a sense, information only and an invitation for views. Can we just clarify what we've been recommended to do if we...
Before I bring you in, Ruth, I just need to get some clarification. This meeting is due to finish at 4.30. Is that a must?
Yes, Chair, there's a risk that if you take decisions after that time, they would be challengeable because the constitution puts an absolute limit on this meeting of two hours and 30 minutes.
And we have three items left. So very quickly then, I want to bottom this one. You wanted to commit?
Just to clarify that effectively, that there are traffic regulation orders that have been advertised. The recommendation is that they are made and that there are further experimental orders that don't need formal committee approval before they are introduced, that those are introduced at the same time and we will report back before those experimental orders are made permanent. So in terms of that kind of process around moving schemes through to decision, there is a decision that we need to kind of implement these traffic regulation orders to implement the scheme. So that is what the committee have been asked to decide today. A delay to that will obviously have a delay to that overall programme delivery. Absolutely willing to support a site visit and a review of the strategic corridor, but that's the recommendation from the committee today.
Can support the recommendation, but also take on board what's being said regarding site visit? Happy with that, colleagues? Yes? Brilliant. We're agreeing the recommendation. We're also having a site visit, but nothing stops us bringing this decision back to this board if it needs to. Ruth, very quickly?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that delay now might affect funding. Can Tom confirm that one way or the other?
Sorry, I'm not going to get into the details, sorry. Not going to, because we're taking the recommendation, as I've said, we're taking that. I mean, it's a new committee, so colleagues have said, yes, if we want to bring it back for a further discussion, we can do.
Chair, a point of order, please? In light of the time, do we just need to go to the vote on the remaining papers?
If we can just bottom this one first. On item 10, are we happy to proceed with the recommendation of what's been outlined? Yep. Brilliant. Item, the two, so we've got three items left. Can we take the last one first, number 13? So very quickly, I'm hoping, I'm going to take my position as Chair. I'm hoping colleagues have read the report. So unless there's something that isn't in the report, David, I'm going to ask members if they've got any questions, please. Thank you, Andrew. While James gets set up, any questions regarding item 13? Brilliant. So we agree with the recommendation on the paper. Fantastic. And James, you should come more often. Should have you at the beginning.
Thank you, Chair. That's fantastic. Yeah.
Swiftly on, number 11, again. I'm hoping colleagues have read the report. So unless we've got any, sorry, David, unless you've got something that isn't in the report, I'll bring you in. If not, can we ask members if they have any questions, please? There is something that you want to mention that isn't in the report, David? Thank you. Councillor Sengar?
Very briefly, Chair, I mean, it's long time since I sat on Cabinet Highways Committee. But, I mean, is this a higher number of objections than normal? Or is this what you would expect for a 20 mile per hour zone of this sort of size?
So in terms of the cross-court scheme, yes, it is a higher number of objections than we would normally get.
But we're still looking in the round and it's still quite a low percentage of people. There's still lots of people who would be in favour of it who have not put their comments in.
We had 149 responses to the consultation. 14 of these were objections. People tend not to sit on the fence. So it's either, you know, support or object. Around 3,000 leaflets were sent out across the whole area because it is quite a big scheme.
Thank you, David. Thank you, councillor Sengar. No? Thank you. So we agree the recommendation on that? Brilliant. Thank you ever so much. Next item is the 20 mile per hour wood seats. Is that you again, David?
City's Chair.
Anything in that report, sorry, anything to add that's not in the report?
No, Chair.
Brilliant. Any questions? Councillor Gillian?
It's just a general question, really. I mean, because it came up with the first one, we were talking about traffic regulations. Have the local councillors been involved and had any involvement? Because it might be a good point of principle to make sure they are.
Yeah, absolutely. As part of the traffic regulation order process, there are a number of statutory consultees and we obviously include local members within that. The statutory consultees include emergency services, so police and fire service as well as ambulance, and we consult with the area as Wastes contracted to.
What's that? Anthony Poynt? Councillor Auckland?
We do support this as local members. It is the first area-wide 20 mile an hour non-engineered speed limit in Greys Park Ward. I must have been doing something wrong over the years because I've had a list. And there are some others that are coming up. So, I mean, I just think these are hearts and mind proposals, are great for road safety and danger reduction, help with walking and cycling. And frankly, if you're going to have an accident, hope nobody does, but it's a lot better to be caught by something travelling at 20 miles an hour than any other higher speed. I think they're chiefly about lowering speed. There was a question raised about doing wood seats road. It's a long straight road. It would be very difficult to do it for a 20 mile an hour. I hope the police will do a bit more enforcement of the 30 mile an hour limit on there. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, you come in very quickly. I'm going to take the chair's prerogative. It's on page 108 and it says it on the other report. South Yorkshire Police are very disappointed with their comments. They are saying they will not enforce, and if this doesn't work, the onus is back on the council to put in further measures. For me, that is unacceptable. It would be helpful to get somebody from South Yorkshire Police here to tell us how they are going to enforce those schemes. Sorry, we've got two minutes left unless councillor Gillian is going to say something now? No? So if we can take the decision? Yep. Brilliant. Thank you ever so much for your attendance. And thank you to the officers as well. End of meeting.
Chair, can I just say, if we've now officially made the decisions, would it be helpful just to give a really quick background to the 20 mile an hour strategy for maybe new members that haven't been on the committee? I'm just so aware of the time, but my perception is that we've made the decisions in time. Is that correct? I can give you a brief introduction if you would like. I'm more than happy not to.
If you just give me a sec. So we've taken the decision, going to end the meeting. And if colleagues want to stay behind to hear David, and David will take questions. That's brilliant of you, David. Appreciate that. So I'm going to end the meeting and then leave it open for colleagues to stay here if they want to ask David any questions. Is that okay? Brilliant. Thank you ever so much, everyone.